In this video, I'm gonna be showing some conversations I had at a town hall meeting at Rogers High School in Spokane. This is the first of two videos. I was gonna try to combine them. There's too many important conversations. Uh, in this first night, since I am an anarchist and a voluntarist, I just kinda went to document. And while I was there, since there weren't a whole lot of people, I thought I might just get involved in some of the conversations. So I did do that, and I was kinda softball with how I handled them. I'll admit that. But there were some important conversations and ideas shared, so that's why I'm bringing you this full video. Uh, but tune in for the next one, which is the next night in Spokane, where I did get a little bit more hardball with the questions I was asking. Actually, and even having a volunteer position is really good. If you're getting called by someone...
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're getting called by someone who's like getting paid to do it, it's like, okay, well, you don't really care.
Exactly. It sounds like that dual problem, which is that some people are lonely and wanna feel like they're helping.
Right.
And then, you know, what happens when they don't get that satisfaction of those emotions down the line? They may become the kind of person who needs help, whereas they could have just been the person, you know, helping.
Well, in this thing, people need help.
Welcome, friends and fellow human beings, and thank you for joining me for this look into how regardless of party affiliation, your elected officials only care about their political resumes and legacies instead of actually serving the people who elected them. Since I've withdrawn myself from voting and participating in the system in that manner, it has become quite apparent how the agenda of the predator class is forwarded. For all those that think voting matters, this video will demonstrate that what really matters is what monetary incentives are dangled in front of your politicians, regardless of what letter they have behind their name. One key thing to remember is while national and state politics get the most attention, it's our most local politicians who make decisions to follow orders that affects us the most as individuals. We have to remember, someone sitting on a throne hundreds, if not thousands of miles away, doesn't have control over our lives. But someone sitting less than 50 miles away and issuing checks to policy enforcers at least thinks they do. It's our job to remind them they don't. Moving on to this video. Last week, I went to two of three town hall meetings held by the city of Spokane, where they were taking input from residents regarding how to spend the dirty bribe money known as the American Relief Fund. The city of Spokane is reportedly getting $82 million. If you think this is gonna go directly to the pocket of the people it was stolen from and have suffered because of these draconian shutdowns in our state and others, you'd be mistaken. It only took one brief conversation to reveal some of the money is earmarked for more bureaucratic jobs, making sure all the strings attached to use this money are being followed. Which brings me to my last point. Before we move on to my discussions from the first of the two town halls I attended, which was at Rogers High School located in the northeastern part of Spokane, none of the elected officials I asked were willing to elaborate on the restrictions or strings attached to using this money. Councilman Brian Bags did at least admit that there are strings that can get in the way of this money being used by people who really need it, but also claimed to not know enough about them. Hmm, my guess is the strings fall right in line with progressing more and more towards the total control and loss of freedom that is Agenda 2030. Remember, we will own nothing and be happy. Those are words of the predator class, not mine.
So we're here tonight at Rogers High School on the north side of Spokane. There's a town hall meeting with Mayor Nadine Woodward, uh, and maybe some of the council members, I'm not really sure, but they're gonna discuss how to spend the COVID-19 funds. So this is the front of the school. I just went in and checked it out. There's several people on masks, so everything's fine. Just trying to report on the news, cuz corporate media doesn't.
Do you have the QR code things, if you wanna take some, so folks can just stand in?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, actually. Try it out and just drop it in.
Alright, so I just wanna make sure my understanding of this is correct, like you said. Uh, so the idea is just to discuss how like the COVID relief funds are gonna be spent from the city, right?
Yeah. Yep, and then that QR code, I believe, goes to the Thought Exchange, where folks can just, um, log on to that and share their ideas right on that platform, too.
Okay.
Or, and I'm pretty sure it should be pre-stamped, um, no, but if they wanted to fill that out, keep them with those pre-stamped. We should, so that's like a post.
So these are like just thoughts that came out from yesterday?
Uh huh.
At the other one, okay.
Yeah.
Well, uh, I have one big issue with food security. I'll just, uh, kinda let my voice be heard.
Let it be heard. Let me sit down and take notes.
I've been going down on weekends throughout the summer and just handing out food downtown to homeless people. And I started doing it with like a church, but then they started telling me, oh, you gotta have a food handler's permit and all this business. And that has nothing to do with the city. It's through the regional health district.
Well, this is maybe right up Melissa Valley.
And like, to me, it was just really absurd because all it was was this church paying $20 for me to get a permit. Like, I was like, I don't want it. I'm not paying for it. And there's, oh, we'll pay the $20. And then I was, oh, it's $20? Do you actually have to pay for this thing? When we're handing out food to people who haven't showered and stuff for weeks. So it seems kinda like it's just a money-making thing for the state. Not like, I said, I'm pretty sure that's the state thing, the food handler's permit, but I don't know if the city could do anything to stop that because it made me, like, I still go do it on my own, but I stopped doing it with an organization that had a better opportunity to get more food out to more people simply because of that. It's just...
Well, and I know, I mean, it's super interesting because usually that's just if you're part of a hearing. I've not heard...
Well, yeah, cuz they were doing, so they, we were like eating food and taking, like, I make breakfast tacos on Saturdays, and I take them out so they're hot and warm, but I just hand them out myself. I'm not part of an organization, so I don't know. Maybe that's why they don't mess with me.
Maybe that's why they don't mess with you.
But like I said, with the church, they started telling, first they would say, they said, you have to get a permit to do that. And then they said, you have to have, uh, um, a food handle... Well, first, they said, you could do it as, if you took the food home and cooked it and made it like a potluck, then you can do it without a permit. So they got away with that for a while, and then the health district said, no, you can't do that anymore. Now you have to hand out cold food, so we were handing out like, literally, it was like disgusting, horrible, unhealthy food to people that need healthy food. So it's just, like, to me, it's all this red tape and bureaucracy gets in the, gets in the way. Like, I'm, as an individual, I can go down and hand out food, but I can only hand out somebody tacos or whatever I'm doing, you know? Where if we can get like an organization together, we can actually make a difference. But that's when it seems like the state steps in and says, well, wait a minute. We're the only, we have the monopoly on compassion. So it seemed like if the city could somehow, to me, that would be, there's, it's not even about money. It's just about getting, getting out of the way and letting people help people. So, um, that would be my recommendation. If we can't do anything about that, maybe have some of the money go towards paying for the food handler's license. Cuz like, that was, I mean, I don't, to me, it's just ridiculous to have to pay the $20, but it's also like, I didn't want the church to have to take out of their funds to pay for it either. Like, they've got other things they need to pay for, so I don't know if there's any way.
I'm running down all your ideas. I was like, I don't know where they will go, but they're all on paper.
Alright, well, that's good. At least they're in town.
I was like, yes, they are.
Well, and that, you know, like, it's an interesting thing to do, is like, I know, you know, I know the reason kind of behind, you know, you want people, if they're getting, like, make sure it's safe and healthy and healthy.
Right.
So make sure people know kind of the basics of how you prepare, because not everyone wants to be a patient.
Right, right.
But could the city do something to help people who want to do that? Like, it's just like a, you know, a two-hour video, so could we play it from right?
Yeah, maybe something like that. There you go.
Where we can, if we're really wanting people to help, that, you know, do the papers and all of that, make it easier, but also make sure that the food people are getting is safe and healthy and is healthy.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I understand that. Like I said, it just kinda seems like, wait a minute, these people are living outdoors. They haven't, I mean, I've, I've gone out. I mean, I smell them when I hand them the food, and I, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to be mean, but it's just, they're not clean people. And it's like, why are we worried about if I wash my hands as I'm handing out this taco to them that's wrapped in tin foil?
What was that?
Right. So anyways, thanks for talking. How are you doing?
Howdy. I'm Brian.
Alright, hi, I'm Cory.
Hey Cory.
Nice to meet you.
Good. I'm kinda pinch-hitting at this table, but happy to...
So here, we're just talking about like how the community can help out with childcare?
Yeah, so we're, uh, when we did surveys with people, um, childcare was one of the top things that people thought would be helpful.
Okay.
And so we're imagining right now, this preliminary, it's not for sure, but putting together a grant program where we could distribute money to childcare providers currently so that they could expand. So how could you get more, more kids in your childcare and so more parents could go to work? So that's, that's the idea that we had. We got some money a year ago under a different federal provision called the CARES Act, and that's what we did some of that money with. So we're thinking about doing that.
Okay.
And we're just checking with, uh...
Well, that's cool. I'm a, I mean, I'm a, I'm a single dad.
Okay.
And so I've had a hard time finding jobs because with my kids' school, especially over the last couple of years, but the school schedule is changing so much.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's good. I like to hear that.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess my only concern is, uh, I believe in like being able to have choice.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that all this money that's getting handed out is gonna have stipulations that you have to adhere to the governor's mandates. So if we're, like, is it really helping someone if we're gonna say, we'll provide childcare, but maybe the person hasn't used childcare because they can't find one that's licensed by the state that will allow them to have their kid that doesn't need to wear a mask go in there and do that? So unless we're actually removing some of those type of restrictions, we're not really helping anyone. Because people that are willing to mask and willing to get the vaccines have already done it, right?
Yeah, well, so a couple of things around that. So this money that's coming is federal money.
Okay.
So it does have strings attached to it.
Right.
Cuz Congress, when they passed it, put some strings, and then, and then the Treasury Department came up with the rules. So there are rules about it. I'm not aware that there's anything around vaccines or masks with this money. Um, you do have to, regardless of this money, the state law does sort of control. And I don't know what the state law is on kids at childcare. I don't. My kids are, my kids are in college now.
It's a lot to know anyways.
My kids are in college, so I don't know, but we're not, but I guess we're not tying anything like that to these funds.
Okay.
But the, there are licensing requirements that every childcare has, so they might already have that. But these funds are not tied to them.
Like, this, this money, as far as the city is concerned, there's not any ties? Like you said, there might be some stipulations from the federal government?
Yeah.
Things like that?
So we're...
And so I'm just curious, like, let's say, is the city, you guys decided to say, you know what? We wanna take care of our community. We're not gonna, we, now that you wanna disregard the stipulations for the money, but let's say you just kinda say, let's bend the rules because it's gonna help our community. Would the federal government, if you didn't adhere to those stipulations, I would assume they would yank the funds then?
They would make us pay the money back.
Okay, alright.
So we, we, there are a bunch of regulations, and we actually have to use some of this money to hire people just to keep us within the lines. Because otherwise, we have to give the money back, and then that would really hurt taxpayers cuz we would be like, oh, we would have to take money from police to do that.
Right, cuz then we're spending it, and then we gotta take...
But luckily, I think the federal ones, they don't have any of the kind of regulations that you're concerned about.
Okay.
So they're not.
Alright.
And we are trying, one of the things that we're trying to do is make it as easy to get the money out and use it and help actual families as we can. So we're, like, I'm a private business person before I was on city council and still am to a degree. So I get that piece, and I have been a parent of young children. Like I say, they're all graduating, uh, next spring, all three of them from college.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so there is, there's hope. There's light at the end of the tunnel. But, so we understand that. But what we really wanna do on the childcare thing is help people get back to work. And right now, my understanding is one big reason why people aren't in the labor force, cuz we keep hearing that people can't, is because especially if their kids are under school age, it's hard to find childcare.
Yeah.
Especially, and you can't afford it. It's like, someone was telling me, I have a friend, it's more expensive to pay for childcare for a young child who doesn't go to school than college.
Yeah.
Uh, so it's...
Well, yeah, I really, I mean, before all this started, I mean, I kinda restricted my work just before my daughter went to school. Cuz like you said, I was paying more. I would go to work. I was losing money every day.
Exactly. No, 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 that's a challenge.
Um, the other thing, I guess, is, so I have a son with a pretty severe disability. Um, is the city possibly, I don't live in the city of Spokane, but I cover stuff for the city, but, um, is the city possibly looking at helping out with programs specifically for like families with disabled kids? Cuz I know those expenses are a lot.
Yeah, well, I, in the sense that if we give money to daycare operators to help, yes. But in terms of, are we looking at programs specifically for families with disabled kids? So far, not, but that's why we're having this engagement with people.
Right, right.
So that's what we're, so I'm gonna write a note about that.
I was gonna say, that would definitely be my recommendation.
Yeah.
That's, it's really hard, especially right now with, with some of the restrictions. Uh, like, I'll just, so I live right on the border with Idaho, and I had an issue. We have a caretaker for my son. He's, and I literally just, I called him. I said, hey, I'm gonna be a little bit late, and I gotta run to the store. I said, I just gotta run to Idaho and I'll be right back. And they, oh, oh, wait a minute. You know, their restrictions say if I leave the state, if he leaves the state, then he's got, like, they can't come for 14 days. I'm like, dude, we just spent four miles away. So like, I mean, I get, like, they have to follow their rules. Um, so it's things like that, then, and then I'm like, oh crap, now I'm out of a caretaker for two weeks.
Tell me your first name again. I'm just...
Cory.
I'm just putting first names down when people give me an idea, so. Great, yeah. No, it's, it is a crazy thing in this world where so, we have lots of government, big government. They can do a lot of good things, and then there's all these rules, and then in practice, so many times, you're like, oh, can't somebody just, like you said earlier, just bend the rule?
Right.
Let's go to the spirit of the rule instead of the...
Right.
So that's challenging, but at the same time, 100 years ago, there were no government resources for families with disabled kids. And so you kinda take it, and you try to hope that people in government will be practical.
Right. Alright, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, nice to meet you, Cory.
Likewise, thank you.
You're welcome.
You too. Honestly, I think having like money from this relief fund go towards recreation is probably more important than a lot of things. Honestly, it's like, we were talking about mental health over there. This has a lot to do with it.
It ties right in together, and I think...
A mountain bike lift at Minnehaha.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna chairlift.
There you go. That's a good idea. That's a good idea. I like the, like, I saw the, like, more access to like Centennial Trail. Kinda like that?
Yeah, the backside, so we have more access, you know, to like Fish Lake Trail is another one.
Okay.
You know, it's tough cuz I, you know, I think what we learned, there was a lot of downfall to the pandemic in parks and recreation, but I think the biggest plus was, I really put an emphasis on the importance of being outdoors.
Oh, yeah.
Relatively in parks when there's nothing else to do.
Right.
From a physical and mental health standpoint, um, in families, and we saw a huge influx of use.
Right. I bet, yeah. I mean, I, I always loved to be in the outdoors, but I, like, it made, just like you said, it made me go, okay, well, I can't go anywhere else. I wanna go outside with my kids and my family, so...
Same.
It did really put that emphasis, yeah, put it back on that, like getting back to nature. So I, I think it's been really healthy for my family, so I would, I don't really have any more ideas of what you have there. I didn't really think about it until I got here, but, uh, I think that's a really good idea, to try to get, secure some funds to increase recreation opportunities.
Another thing that we're seeing too, so we did a huge investment in 2008 for like aquatic centers and sports fields, and then Riverfront Park was our last big investment. But now we're really kinda focusing our efforts on the neighborhood park level.
Okay.
Across the city and putting investment in the neighborhood park.
One thing I just thought of real quick. Uh, I know some people, like low-income people, have a hard time getting into state parks cuz of the, like, access passes.
Oh, the Discovery Pass.
Yeah, I know, like, the libraries have some, I think you can go, like, check them out. If we could like increase the amount of those, maybe to make it more available to low-income people so they can get to the state parks. That would, there, I gave something.
There you go.
Wow, not me, no.
I'm out.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank God.
Alright, well, my name's Cory. It was nice talking to you guys.
Nice talking to you, Cory.
Have a good...
You too.
These officers are not tied to the radio. I mean, they take calls, but they only take calls that relate to mental health, so they don't have to go there, slap a Band-Aid on it, and be like, hey, literally, I've got 20 other calls. I've gotta put a Band-Aid on it, let's go to the next one.
Yeah.
It's their, their job is handle that call as if that's the only call you have all day. Spend as much time as you need. So I think that not being tied to the radio, the types of officers, so these officers bid this, we don't assign them. So they wanna be there, and the folks who wanna be there typically understand a better outcome. And they understand the patients, and let's work through this. They're not forced to be there.
What does that mean, bid?
A bid beats, you put in a request to go there, as opposed to you're assigned, and you didn't have a choice. Uh, and then I think that, um, they're able to read the person sometimes. This sounds weird, but sometimes this, actually, if you ask the social workers, like, more than this, this de-escalates. Cuz although they have mental health issues, they still know, there's a, there's a police officer here, right? So it actually de-escalates, but if it's having the opposite effect, they can interchange roles where the officer kinda steps back, kinda gives space, then lets this person civilly enclose their act. So they're able to kind of adjust right while they're there, what kind of response based on what this person's presenting to them.
Has there been any, for the social workers, have there been any like really dangerous situations that we weren't able to switch roles fast enough or anything like that?
No, not, excuse me, not to my dollars. Um, here's, um, and I won't give names. I don't, there's no names on here, but...
Yeah, I'm just gonna give you, they, they present examples every year of calls that they went to. I haven't had a chance to read this yet, but here's an example.
Of the types of calls that are going on. A 72-year-old female with fixed delusions was discharged from outpatient counseling services due to loss of funding. Post-discharge, the elderly female had been calling 911 multiple times a week to report delusional content. She's tying up staff attempting to triage her calls for service. The BHU units, behavioral health units, made contact with her. They're able to get her enrolled in the Frontier Behavioral Health Assertive Community Treatment Program. So they're, um, they call it, they're INCAT, assertive, mobile, mobile, well, they changed the name of it, but it's an assertive community treatment program, which is they go out and do the follow-up long-term. In other words, it's not just a one-and-done.
Yeah.
So it says she's now engaged in wraparound mental health services, and her calls to 91111 have stopped. Um, that's just as an example.
Yeah. What is the funding for that? Cuz I think that probably ties in with what we're doing here. What is the funding for individuals like that currently?
Um, for who? Um, Frontier, Frontier has a budget for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the city, uh, aid in that in any way?
That's a, boy, that's a good...
Like, if we were to take some of the ARP money and send it up in a fund or something like that?
I know they could, I'm sure they could use it. I know they could. I could actually put you in touch with Jan Takamoto, too, if that's something of interest to you. Takamoto? And I'll, uh, let me... Oops. How are you?
Pretty good. How about you?
I'm, I'm not doing too shabby, thank you.
Jan Takamoto?
Takamoto, yeah.
Okay.
She's, she absolutely loves this.
Hope I didn't hijack it.
No, not at all.
Certainly.
So back to one of your earlier questions was, from your perspective, what are ways that we could use the ARP dollars to, you know, positively affect mental health? You know?
Yeah, you know, one of the challenges I've heard, and I don't think it's approved, especially last year kinda came to a head. When you look at eastern state and western state, you have a, you have a lot of folks that, um, probably aren't ready to be released yet. They need long-term care. I mean, it's not, you're not permanently storing them there. You're just getting their, their medication balance, getting them counseling treatment. Is that they, if they have too many beds filled, they'll get penalized by the state. And they, they'll pay, um, they'll pay a lot of fines. So there's times where they're pushing people out that aren't quite yet ready to be pushed out.
Because the state is disincentivizing care and...
Absolutely. And you have this tension between, you know, your Fourth Amendment right against unlawful seizure versus, this person's probably not quite yet ready to go out.
Totally.
And so that tension is creating some problems in terms of, we need a little bit more time, but we have more people coming in. We don't have enough beds. We're gonna get fined by the state if we don't keep people. So I think giving them more beds to, to help people get stabilized is huge.
Do they have the physical space for more beds?
Um, to a certain extent, they do. That's a good question, Jonathan. I, I, to a certain extent, they do. I don't know how many more beds they would have space for, but they'd also need then obviously more staffing to, as, as we increase the beds, but, um, that's a good question. Um, one of the challenges that ties in directly with mental health is obviously the, the drug addiction as well. Years ago, you probably heard me share the story. Forgive me if you hear it again, but when I was a captain that used to actually work for a living, I went out, uh, Francis F. Monroe, there's a pet co there. And the manager called and said, hey, there's a guy, he's tweaking, he's scaring our customers. I was close, like, so I get, get out, talk to him. He's at the back in the parking lot. Very nice guy, tweaking. He'd look at him, his eyes dilated and jittery, and I just said, hey, are you on anything? Awesome conversation. He's like, yeah, are you on meth? Yeah. Do you like being on meth? And he's like, no. So I asked him, oh, why don't you get off? In other words, aside, I'm not saying it's easy. I'm just saying, why are you not trying to get off in essence, but why?
What is your fare?
Yeah, and he said, um, that they're seven weeks behind on treatment beds for. So he's ready to go right then and there. Seven weeks from now, he's in the throes of this again, so you have to have a bed when they're ready. Not seven weeks later, not even a week later. One, there's a, it was back east in one of the states where they had an amazing, amazing success. We could walk in the police station and say, I'm, I'm an addict. You could even have, you know, user amount of drugs on you, and they, he'd say, I'm ready for treatment. Well, they were able to get an agreement to have beds right then and there. So they would take them right then there while they're ready. And, um, that was huge.
Was that Rhode Island or Delaware?
Yes, it was one of those. Yeah. So they were able to get those beds right away for folks instead of seven weeks of waiting. So we don't have enough treatment beds, and the pull occurring is huge. Yeah, one of the things I remember going to crisis intervention training, which was a week-long course at the academy. And they had a gentleman come in that had schizophrenia, and he spoke to this classroom of police officers. I remember him saying, he thinks Cheney PD, cuz he said he was, you know, having a schizophrenic episode, had a knife, middle of the night, chasing Cheney PD officers down the middle of the street, wanting to stab him. He said, they, they could've shot me, they'd have been justified, and they didn't. But in talking to him, he has to, I mean, we're, he basically, we'll eat a bowl of Wheaties for breakfast. He has to eat a bowl of pills. He has to take two pills or three pills for, for this symptom, and then he's gotta take two because of the side effects of this one. And he's gotta take those twice a day, but he only takes these ones maybe once a day. And then at 10 o'clock in the morning, he's gotta take this other pill, and he takes that one three times a day. This pill, he takes once a day. And so if you, and it takes a month to get their medication balance just perfect, because one has an impact on the other. And what he said was, it's so much easier for these folks that have mental health issues. I'm just gonna get cocaine, heroin, meth, Oxycontin. Cuz I take one pill, I feel better. I don't have to worry about missing a dose and then starting from scratch again. So that the treatment ties in directly with the mental health issues, is having enough treatment. And there's just not even a fraction of...
And if you had some sort of situation where they qualified for, you know, in-home care to ensure that they were taking their medications on a regular basis?
People stopping by, following up, yeah. So he's like, hey, I'm, you know, Steve, how's it going? Are you taking your medication? How are you feeling today?
Yeah, something where if we had more of these, um, what'd you call them?
The...
The Cotapoin?
Cotapoin?
Yeah, right. If we had more of those where we could actively be doing anything on top of that, or...
Yes, and that's, I think, where you see, when you see the follow-up, I think that's some of what they're doing as well, is just, hey, how you feeling? Are you taking your medication? Do you need anything? And they'll line them up with resources like shelter. A lot of these people don't have shelter, with, you don't have food, well, let's get you lined up with Salvation Army for food. So they'll do a lot of that other stuff, cuz there's no one else there to do it.
I wonder, too, if it'd be easier to get more counselors on board, who are like, okay, look, you won't have to go into that sort of emergency situation, but we can use you for these follow-up situations where it's a little bit safer. And it's not completely safe necessarily, but, you know, it, it might improve for people.
You're not selling it.
Yeah, exactly.
I think Jen would love that.
And then they would have so much experience that then maybe they could transition into folks who did go into those emergency situations.
Or people were on vacation or wherever, they could fill in for...
Exactly, have, yeah, as folders, yeah, I think that's good.
Could you imagine if you did have someone that is in the midst of a terrible, terrible mental health issue? Every day, someone was able to stop by, or maybe they stopped by, but that afternoon, they could call up, you know, hey, you're on, I'm, I'm starting to kinda not feel good.
Yeah.
You could go right there, right then and there. Just don't have the resources, so they either kinda unravel right there, or they unravel, and they do something, and then we get called.
Do these individuals already not have somebody to call, like a, like a Frontier or some other place where they've already been getting help to call and say, hey, I need some help right now?
They, they can, um, and that's...
What I'd hate to do is be redundant if we could, you know, do something.
Yeah.
I don't think that there really is, cuz, you know, and also, the other thing you have to consider, in my opinion, is, um, when you're in that kind of, you know, excited or excited state, like, that's not the first thing that's gonna come to your mind, like, oh, let me, let me call a mental health...
I was going to say, I've actually helped people, let them stay at my house and they don't, they don't want help like. That they want someone like that's a friend. So like, like you, I actually agree with you, someone that would like call and check in on them.
Yeah.
Instead of it being clinical, more, I mean, obviously it has to be, it's a professional job you're doing.
Right, right.
It's less clinical if you're kind of just calling in like, hey, how are you doing today? You know, are you taking your medications? Things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I have a friend, I'll just, for the last year, she's been dealing with all sorts of mental health issues and she's tried to go to authorities, like, you know, go through the state and she, she just, I don't know, she doesn't, she doesn't trust people. I don't know what it is exactly. But she never follows through that way. Whereas then like, I've started saying, okay, I'll help you. I'm a friend. You can trust me. It, she's, I mean, obviously she's not like well yet, but things are going better.
Yeah.
So to have some, something like that, I would agree, that would be really good. I, I agree too, like the, the ride-along type. If we could get more of those.
Okay, so that's a.
I've been out like on, I go out on weekends. You maybe have heard of me, but, uh, I film cops when they, when you guys make stops and I can, Spokane police is pretty good, but like the Spokane County Sheriff, they don't have a very good reputation. And once they start talking to a homeless person, it just starts going downhill right away. Whereas I've seen where they have someone doing a ride-along and just having someone else there. I don't know if it makes the, the officer act a little differently or what, but it, there is, it's more of a conversation. And you know, I don't know that it's not a conversation before, you know, I mean, we all have our preconceived notions of what's going on, a homeless person, a person on drugs. You know, here's a cop that coming up, I'm going to, oh, I gotta not get, I gotta not go to jail tonight, whatever. So we all have our preconceived notions. But having someone else there, like you said, to kind of go back and forth to, it really does help. I've seen it firsthand.
Yeah.
Where people are really fired up talking to a police officer and then, you know, a mental health professional will come in and they can calm them down. And then you can resolve the situation rather than going, okay, now it's getting out of hand.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And if I'm having a bad effect for talking, it's like, okay, I'm, I'm not clicking with this person, which happens. It's like, I'm going to step back, you know, Jonathan can come and talk with you.
Right, right.
Close and, and, uh, it just, it's, it gives you more options right there.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is this, is this, these checkups, is this something that like a, forgive me if this seems dumb, but like a cop shop volunteer could be making calls and checking in?
See, that's what I'm thinking of too. Cause like, one of the things I was thinking is if you did have some sort of hotline like that, I can imagine it being good for the mental health of other individuals to also be like, hey, I would love to volunteer to call, you know, folks that are in distress, you know, from time to time. Because I'm lonely and I need someone to talk to. My grandmother would love to do something like that. You know, you do a short bit of training and she wouldn't want to get paid, but she would do it and she'd call ten people a day.
Totally.
And then suddenly, you know, you've got this whole huge resource that doesn't really cost the city much, but except for, you know, a little bit of training and organization.
Yeah, exactly. Like the training of, okay, when should you probably call nine-one-one? Because this person's like thinking of killing yourself versus a lot of what you'll see is, um, they call them hot, hot spotters, the fire department calls it, and it's people who are just lonely.
Yeah.
They're more than lonely. They want to talk to someone. So nine-one-one will, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, firefighters will always come, you know? And if you did have that, that would be a whole new evolution of cops. If, if you gave them that training and then you said, are you?
Cause then you could have like, you know, five or six cop shop volunteers assigned to one of these counselors. You know, and so then they are making the calls and saying, hey, we should maybe check in on Jerry or, you know, whatever, something like that.
Am I going to write that down? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Actually, and even having them be a volunteer position is really good. If you're getting called by someone, exactly.
Exactly.
If you're getting called by someone who's like getting paid to do it, it's like, okay, well, you don't really care. This is a job.
It solves like that, the dual problem, which is that some people are lonely and want to feel like they're helping.
Right.
And then, you know, what happens when they don't get that satisfaction of those emotions down the line? They may become the kind of person who would need help.
Right.
Whereas they could have just been the person, you know, helping.
Well, and this thing, people need purpose, right? And so if we gave some of the elderly folks in the community who like, maybe they're retired or something like that. And you know, for a couple of hours a day, all they do is make calls, but it gives them something to look forward to the next day or something like that.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And they know how to, like, you know, they know how to pick up on the sides. That's something that could, you know, escalate soon or the common emergency situation.
Yeah. I think that's awesome. That's where that training comes into. And when in doubt, call nine-one-one, prime cell. I'd love it.
And is there a number that, that the state had developed, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, was it nine-eight-eight or something that the state's trying to? Okay. Is it just still standing out?
Yeah, I think, um, there, I want to say it's, if it's not twenty-twenty-two, it'll be twenty-twenty-three where now it becomes mandatory all statewide. Somebody has to be available twenty-four, seventy or something. How about, uh, what's the number again? Sorry.
Nine-eight-eight, I think.
Thank you. Yes. Nine-eight-eight. If you're having a, a mental health crisis, you call nine-eight, twenty-four, seven, any county. Give me a tippy top of northeast Washington or all the way down, someone will, someone will answer. One of the things though, I know, excuse me, the social worker said was, they also need to get the staff to respond. Cause it's, a phone call works for some, but for others, they need that face-to-face. And face-to-face is always the best. So I think one of the things they're looking at is ramping up staffing for the entire state, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you.
You're going to give us all kinds of great ideas of how to spend, how to money.
So, yeah, I am as a matter of fact.
Thank you again for supporting my channel. Just by watching my content, you are supporting my work. However, if you want to support me in other ways, sign up on censorship fighting YouTube alternatives like Library, which uses Odyssey for its video platform or Hive. Use the links in the description to earn yourself some decentralized crypto for getting started. There are non-cryptocurrency platforms as well, but you might as well get something of value in return for your support of your favorite content creators. Links to all of the platforms you can find questionable authority on are in the description. And don't forget to check out the questionable authority merchandise store.